Stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Mrs. Gould. I'm here, Mr. Thompson.
I'm here.
Mr. Cabrera.
I'm here. In compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law in 1975, the notice requirements have been satisfied as to the time, place, and date of holding said meeting by posting notice on the bulletin board here in Borough Hall and by mailing and emailing saying to the Herald of Cape May County and the Press of Atlantic City on October 28th, 2020. In the event of an emergency, your exit is the way you came in, your back right or your front left or our front right. A couple of quick announcements, this meeting is being shown live here on Wildwood Crest's YouTube page and also on Wildwood Crest's official Borough Facebook page. And you also have the opportunity to call in through our AT&amp;T conference line. That number is 888-363-4734. And when prompted, you're going to enter the access code 969-9020, followed by the pound or the hashtag. And if you watch the recorded version of this meeting and you have questions that you'd like to ask, please call our clerk at 609-729-8040, or clerk@wildwoodcrest.org. Madam Clerk, may we have the ordinances, please?
Yes, sir. The first, and they are all being on adoption tonight, or this morning. The first is ordinance number 1366, and it's for the UEZ composition.
I move that ordinance number 1366 be placed on second reading and final passage by title only.
Second.
It has been moved in second that ordinance number 1366 be placed on second and final reading by title only.
Roll call, Mrs. Gould.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. Cabrera.
Yes.
Ordinance 1366 reads as follows, "An ordinance of the Borough of Wildwood Crest, amending ordinance number 911 of the Code of the Borough of Wildwood Crest."
Pertaining to the Enterprise Zone Development Corporation of the Wildwoods.
I move that a public hearing now be held on ordinance number 1366.
Second.
It has been moved in second that a public hearing on ordinance number 1366 now be held.
Roll call, Mrs. Gould.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. Cabrera.
Yes. Floor is open. Any questions from the public on ordinance number 1366?
Hearing no comments, I move that the public hearing on ordinance 1366 now be closed.
Second.
It has been moved in second that the public hearing on ordinance number 1366 now be closed.
Roll call, Mrs. Gould.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. Cabrera.
Yes.
I move that ordinance 1366 be passed on second and final reading and advertised according to law.
Second.
It has been moved in second that ordinance number 1366 be passed on second and final reading and advertised according to law.
Roll call, Mrs. Gould.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. Cabrera.
Yes.
Next, we have ordinance number 1367 regarding Guatita.
I move that ordinance 1367 be placed on second reading and final passage by title only.
Second.
It has been moved in second that ordinance number 1367 be placed on second and final reading by title only.
Roll call, Mrs. Gould.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. Cabrera.
Yes.
Ordinance 1367 reads as follows, "An ordinance of the Borough of Wildwood Crest, amending ordinance 1260, ordinance 1141, ordinance 957, ordinance 922, ordinance 842, ordinance 801, ordinance 773, and any other ordinance in the Code of the Borough of Wildwood Crest regarding tourism funding to the Greater Wildwoods Tourism Improvement and Development Authority."
I move that a public hearing now be held on ordinance number 1367.
Second.
It has been moved in second that a public hearing on ordinance number 1367 now be held.
Roll call, Mrs. Gould.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. Cabrera.
Yes. Floor is open. Ordinance number 1367.
Hearing no comments from the public, I move that the public hearing on ordinance 1367 now be closed.
Second.
It has been moved in second that the public hearing on ordinance number 1367 now be closed.
Roll call, Mrs. Gould.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. Cabrera.
Yes.
I move that ordinance 1367 be passed on second and final reading and advertised according to law.
Second.
It has been moved in second that ordinance number 1367 be passed on second and final reading and advertised according to law.
Roll call, Mrs. Gould.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. Cabrera.
Yes.
Lastly, we have ordinance 1368, and it is the Salary Ordinance.
I move that ordinance number 1368 be placed on second reading and final passage by title only.
Second.
It has been moved in second that ordinance number 1368 be placed on second and final reading by title only.
Roll call, Mrs. Gould.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. Cabrera.
Yes.
Ordinance 1368 reads as follows, "An ordinance to amend Section 59-3 of the Code of the Borough of Wildwood Crest, known as the Salary Ordinance, fixing and determining salaries and compensations of the Borough of Wildwood Crest, and providing for the raising of the amounts thereof by taxation and for the time and method of payment."
I move that a public hearing now be held on ordinance number 1368.
Second.
It has been moved in second that a public hearing on ordinance number 1368 now be held.
Roll call, Mrs. Gould.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. Cabrera.
Yes. Floor is open. Ordinance number 1368.
Hearing no, hearing nothing from the public, I move that the public hearing on ordinance 1368 now be closed.
Second.
It has been moved in second that the public hearing on ordinance number 1368 now be closed.
Roll call, Mrs. Gould.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. Cabrera.
Yes.
I move that ordinance 1368 be passed on second and final reading and advertised according to law.
Second.
It has been moved in second that ordinance number 1368 be passed on second and final reading and advertised according to law.
Roll call, Mrs. Gould.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. Cabrera.
Yes.
Next, we have the resolutions. The first is authorizing award of the concession rental for bicycle concession number three at Heather Road for bicycle rentals only, Borough Concession Agreement number 2021-003.
Still moved.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the foregoing resolution be adopted. Roll call, Mrs. Gould.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. Cabrera.
Yes.
Next is authorizing award of the concession rental for bicycle concession number 8A at Rambler Road for bicycle rentals only, Borough Concession Agreement number 2021-002.
Still moved.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the foregoing resolution be adopted. Roll call, Mrs. Gould.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. Cabrera.
Yes.
Next is authorizing refund of property taxes or utilities overpayment in the amount of $2,350.83 for property located at 7701 Atlantic Avenue, made payable to Atef George.
Still moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the foregoing resolution be adopted. Roll call, Mrs. Gould.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. Cabrera.
Yes.
Next is authorizing refund of property taxes or utilities overpayment in the amount of $1,129.24 for property located at 5400 New Jersey Avenue, made payable to Wells Fargo.
Still moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the foregoing resolution be adopted. Roll call, Mrs. Gould.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. Cabrera.
Yes.
Next is appointing Lynn Dean as Claims Coordinator effective January 1, 2022.
Still moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the foregoing resolution be adopted. Roll call, Mrs. Gould.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. Cabrera.
Yes.
Lastly, is authorizing refund of property taxes or utilities overpayment made payable to CoreLogic.
Still moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the foregoing resolution be adopted. Roll call, Mrs. Gould.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. Cabrera.
Yes.
Ronnie, what's going on upstairs?
Uh, it's a construction officer, I guess a roof is stuck.
They're constructing. I move that all bills properly authorized as submitted be paid.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that all bills properly authorized as submitted be paid. Roll call, Mrs. Gould.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. Cabrera.
Yes.
I move that all reports received from the Court Administrator, Chief Financial Officer, Tax Collector, Chief of Police, Supervisor for the Recreation Department, Construction Official, Emergency Services Coordinator for the EMS, and the Wildwood Crest Volunteer Fire Company Chief for the month ending October 31, 2021 be accepted as presented.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that all reports received from the Court Administrator, Chief Financial Officer, Tax Collector, Chief of Police, Supervisor for the Recreation Department, Construction Official, Emergency Services Coordinator for the EMS, and the Wildwood Crest Volunteer Fire Company Chief for the month ending October 31, 2021 be accepted as presented. Roll call, Mrs. Gould.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. Cabrera.
Yes.
I move that all minutes from the regularly scheduled commission meetings dated October 20, 2021 and November 3, 2021 be approved as presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that all minutes from the regularly scheduled commission meetings dated October 20th and November 3, 2021 be approved as presented. Roll call, Mrs. Gould.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. Cabrera.
Yes. Okay, moving on agenda, Administrator Mann is on vacation, so that brings us right to Mr. de Blasio, the engineers report.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. We have several updates under capital improvements. First one is in regard to Scoop Taylor Park, the project is complete except for the new gazebo, which is scheduled to be installed in January. The contractor for the Beach Street End Public Access Improvements Phase One, which we refer to as Beach Bumpouts, has been completed, and we are in the process of closing out the project with punch list and contractual closeout. As a segue to that, the phase, Beach Bumpout Phase 1B, which is being funded by NJDCA, grant money is scheduled to be advertised for bid this month, which is five more street ends, so that will put the borough at about 10 completed before the summer season of 2022. That'll go out to bid in December, and we have a targeted completion date for late spring of next year. The work for the reconstruction of Washington Avenue is ongoing. All the utility work is completed, and the concrete is approximately 75% done. The contractor for the reconstruction of Beach Avenue has completed all the water main installation and is currently installing water services for the footwash showers on the beach side of the bike path. Moving along to grant applications, we have good news. The borough was notified by the NJDOT that a grant in the amount of $196,025 was allocated for the reconstruction of Syracuse Avenue. I never saw a grant award that had $25 in it, but that's the number that was allocated. It's my understanding that Syracuse Avenue may be considered for construction for next year, but that's good news that the borough received that money. Lastly, our office has provided Rotella Associates with the necessary engineering information for the next round of FEMA grant applications for flood mitigation on the bay side of the borough. All of our information was given to Mr. Rotella, which was submitted by the deadline in November, and he is in the process now of getting feedback from FEMA, but I think we'll be in a good spot for consideration, and that's a multimillion dollar grant ask. That's my report.
Okay, Gary Bondi, any questions for Mr. de Blasio?
Can I just add something? This, this is the report that we usually get from Mark, and we can never follow it because we don't know what he's doing. So I said, could you make a cheat sheet? So this is what, for the new people coming in, you'll probably be getting something like this, so you can follow along and you know exactly what's happening, because Don and I were just sitting there and looking, he said, what is he talking about? Where is it? So now we know where it is, so you'll know where it is too. Okay.
All right. Mr. Thompson?
How's it?
Any questions from the public for engineers?
Okay, Mark, just one quick comment. So, so on the grant we have for Syracuse, that's for a total, that would be for a total reconstruction, correct?
Correct.
All right, so I, I think we all, we've all seen roadway conditions where we have a lot of potholes, we have some cases of some earth coming up through the, through the, through the roadways, some of the curves, a lot of the curves are deteriorating. Maybe the sanitary sewer and the infrastructure underneath that's okay. What I'd like to do is have you and Public Works coordinate, because there are a lot of blocks in the crest that I see that just need at least a temporary overlay or a mill and pave to get us by, and it's just, it's actually quite embarrassing to see some of the streets in Wildwood Crest the way that we see this. If you guys could coordinate that, and maybe as we talk about capital for 2022, we can get that, get that report, and maybe it's a cost estimate for next year.
Okay.
Right? Okay. All right, that said, moving on, nothing under correspondence. First round, the public comments, we'll open it up to anybody here in the public that has any public comments. Yes, sir?
Joe Viscombi, 308 Washington, I just want to thank-
Oh, I'm sorry.
You have to come up to the podium, please.
Joe Viscombi, 308 Washington. In light of the election, I want to thank Joyce and David for their, their work in the borough. I not always agree with everything that goes on, but I realize that, that everybody, the elected officials are trying their best to make to improve the borough. So thank you very much, and congratulations on Don on your reelection.
Thank you.
But I, I know that time is put in, that a lot of people don't realize that. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Joe.
Anybody else? The microphone is open.
And hot.
And hot. All right, anybody on the conference line have any public comments they'd like to make? Here none, I'm going to move on to the discussion items. We have one item listed under new business, and that is a request for a quote unquote little free pantry at a borough building, and that request came in from Kristen Vesalo, 8201 New Jersey Avenue, and she asking for, on behalf of the Crest Memorial, third grade class, as a community project, the students would like to add a little free pantry in town for, and that idea came from another city outside of Wildwood Crest. They're asking for somewhere such as the Crest Pool, the Crest Pier, perhaps the old library, and I believe, my understanding is, in reading their documentation, is that they want to, they're going to, they're going to build what, what they'd like to see, and it would be, again, for throughout the holidays. So she had contacted media, Facebook, social media posts, so I asked her to reduce this to writing for consideration of the government body. I personally have no issues with it, in fact, I think it's a good idea, but I defer to my-
Well, well, we already, we already have things going to the Crest Pier, that, that goes in all the time, so this could just be added, and maybe somebody who's really good in public works could make something that, running outside, it looks like a Little Red Schoolhouse, and put everything in there with the, you have like a wagon that everything is in, I believe now, if I'm right, Brian.
Yes, we do a, we did a food drive, excuse me, for Thanksgiving season, and last year we also did a second one for Christmas season, so I would anticipate we would do the same. Right now, we donate everything to the Lazarus House.
Right.
So we collected two wagons full of food for Thanksgiving, and actually, the last part of that was actually delivered this morning. So, and then the rest of it will be, we'll do another one at Christmas time.
What I've never understood is why people seem to give food for Thanksgiving and Christmas, but the other days, nobody worries about. So I mean, hunger is hunger, and unfortunately or fortunately, it is in this community, and it should be understood, and it should be taken care of, and we should not have people in this very wonderful town go hungry.
Great.
Yes, sir. So I believe, I don't want this to be misleading, that this is for year round, not just for the holiday. So I want to be clear there, this is for year round, the request, I do believe. Secondly, I've seen this in other towns, and it does get used. I do have a suggestion of what I've seen in other towns, I've seen one specifically, they put it out and it's, it's facing the, the sun in the mid-afternoon, and sun's beating down on it, it needs some shade or be in the shade, because it's stuff, canned goods, boxed stuff, they put in there, a lot of people put in, they do take out, but it sits in the sun, and then somebody's got to monitor this. Some stuff will sit there way too long, possibly out of date, especially if it's put in there close to the end of the date. I'm all for it, but when we do this, we need to consider that when we place it, some shade, whether we get a roof over it, or whatever you do, or inside a building, but that, that to me is what I saw was a definite problem.
Okay, so if we're, I think it sounds like we're all okay with the concept.
Yes.
Perhaps our resolution would be, you know, subject to, I, I think this is probably not to put more recreation, this is a recreation, either it's a recreation building or the pool somewhere where there's year-round staff that, that can kind of just keep an eye on things. So, so I would think it would be the pool or the Crest Pier, the old library, that, that's not, that's not, there's nobody there at this time of the year, and there's, there's no plans to anyway. So Madam Clerk has a resolution drafted, I believe, that if you're in support of that, if everybody's okay with us in concept, and then that recreation, and if necessary, Public Works coordinate the details for her to-
So I'll go ahead and read the resolution, then we can pass that.
Okay.
It is a resolution authorizing Crest Memorial third grade students to place little free pantry at the entrance of a public building, to be determined by the commissioners. Can I get a motion?
Still moved.
Second.
Roll call, Mrs. Gould.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. Cabrera.
Yes. And to Commissioner Thompson's point, I just want to make sure that we do, you know, we don't want to have, we just, you know, can't have a bunch of food in there rotting away, it's supposed to be perishable, I assume, and all that good stuff, so I guess someone just has to keep an eye on what's in there.
Do we have a place that you definitely want it, so it can be reflected in the resolution?
I would leave it up to Team Rocket. Okay. That takes care of that. Under old business, nothing there new to report. Those items will keep staying on the old business until they're addressed one way or the other. All right.
Can I ask you a question? Under old business, Francine, I had asked you last week, because I didn't go to the league, since I didn't get reelected, so I figured I didn't want to take up a space, but for the EV, the electric vehicles, do you have information on that?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
We did, Connie and I, that was two vendors while we were there, on an EV, and, and actually got their information. One of the vendors did reach out to me already, and we're going to meet next, possibly when Connie gets back. I didn't want to firm up on it, on a date, but we'll get, we'll look at that information on how we can, you know, best accommodate them in any of our upcoming projects as well.
Okay, good, thank you.
Okay, I'd like to touch on the dredging for a moment. We had another meeting with the state for the dredging, they, we did get them down here this time. The, the dredging project for the state was a little bit put on hold due to COVID, and none of the state workers were in, they were all working from home, but this has gotten backfired up. The meeting went very well, so I, I feel good about the prospect of getting the Back Bay dredged, the plan being to change the state channel, which currently goes between Shaw and Ephraim Island, to change the channel to directly up behind the homes on Park Boulevard and out by Schooner Island Marina. I presented that to them at the first meeting when I got in office, and they seem to be okay with that, so hopefully that'll become the new state channel, which means the state will be dredging that. The prognosis is good, and then it did get back to us last week requesting that we now set up monthly contact via either Zoom meetings or emails to stay on top of this. The hope was that they were going to try to start some of the work actually this fall to prepare for the dredging materials and what they can do, and some of what is in the plan for that dredging back there. So hopefully now that we've got them on board and back down here, we had a very productive meeting, included North Wildwood, Wildwood, and West Wildwood, so that we have more bite, and that went very well. So hopefully within the next two years or so, we'll see some dredging back there, but the, the meeting did go very well, and we're hoping to see that happen.
Okay. Anybody else? Any last, final public comments? Yes, sir? Come on up.
Fred.
Good morning. Fred Mettler, 109 East and Road. Also Chairman of the Back Bay Committee as a subcommittee on the Planning Board. David, thank you for that report. As you know, for the last eight years, we've been trying to get this Back Bay dredging started. I want to ask that I get it put in the, the communication link on all future meetings, I found out about this meeting that you had, or that was called after it was already done. If I could be put, put part of, since I am the Chairman of it, as part of the Planning Board, I'd like to be part of these meetings and, and any other communications that happens with the state, if that's possible. And you say that there's going to be some ongoing things with Zoom meetings and things like that?
If necessary. We just want monthly communications for updates, and that was requested by the state. For this past meeting, you know, the state was asking just the principals to be involved, being the, the, the mayors and work commissioners, whoever was involved with the, the three towns, since all three towns were coming, and so they did ask for just the principals of the towns to be there.
Okay, do you know if there were minutes taken at a meeting?
There were no, yes.
Okay, if I, there's a possibility if I could get a copy of the minutes, just so I can-
I don't see why not.
Just, just so I can stay up on top of things. I, I give a report at every planning board meeting, and it'd be nice if I could, you know, share some of that information about this stuff.
Okay, so you know that we have, Debbie is no longer with us. Debbie Rogers is the Planning Board Secretary.
Yes.
But Karen Duffy is there.
Yes.
She's new. But there's no meeting scheduled for December that was canceled because there was nothing coming up. So I would, if I were you, I would make sure you go up and talk to Karen and make sure she gives you all the information when the meetings are, and if anything's come in about that, okay?
Okay, okay. Now, David, this past meeting that you had, you say it's, it was shared with Wildwood, North Wildwood.
Correct.
West Wildwood. Are all future meetings going to include all three communities, or are we going to be spearheading this ourselves?
Actually, we're going to try and work on our own, and that was kind of what we spoke with them when they requested this meeting as a whole group. We don't want to have that bog us down or anything with a part of this that is just Wildwood Crest, so some will probably be joint, but we're actually, our monthly thing is going to be just us.
Okay, good, good. I don't know if you've all seen this, that this came out yesterday from Congressman Van Drew, but he, and this is federal money, okay? As far as infrastructure, it'd be nice if we can find out, because he talks about Back Bay dredging from Cape May to Atlantic City, and that's going to be a lot of money available to do that, and if we can tap into that, I'm not sure, you know, who, who, I mean, I have no problem with contacting Van Drew's office to find out, you know, what, what we can do as far as that help Wildwood Crest, you know? And I get back to you, but I mean, this could be an opportunity here for us to really get some money to do the right thing, you know, not just Band-Aid our problem, but take care of the, the channel, possibly Sunset Lake, which, which started this whole thing. It's not getting any better, okay? It's getting worse, and pretty soon, it's not going to be usable. I said that eight years ago in here at a commissioners meeting. You can stand up at low tide in the middle of Sunset Lake, and it's up to your waist. Someone's going to get hurt on a jet ski or water skiing, and then it's going to be be a real problem, so just wanted to share that with you. Thank you for the report and I look forward to ongoing working with you, okay?
Just so you know, Fred, that was part of our meeting. We were well aware of that for a while now, it's just now hitting public, but we were aware of it and it was part of the meeting. It's actually like a double edged sword because the problem with that is when they come out with all that money, every project that's ready to go will get money thrown at it fast because they want to see a result quick for the, the federal government now, because they want to see that result instantly so that they can take credit for it. And if our project wasn't ready, it actually could back us down, so, which is why I pushed for them right now in the fall to be here and they're supposed to be here in the fall. They're doing some of the leg up part of, for our project. I'm not privy to put out there in the public at this time, however, I did twist their arm to get it underway now. As you know, I've been pushing for it for.
Sure.
All four years and they told me, okay, they would do it this fall now and it is part of that, so that our project would be one of the projects ready to go when this money frees up, because this money will be a little bit, they put it out there now like it's ready to go. By the time you do paperwork for that, it'll be two years before that money.
Sure.
Hits the street anyway and I wanted our project ready to be one of those first cut projects to get done are gonna be the ones that are furthest along, so we've been well into it, that's why we're pushing.
So what do we need to do to be ready to go?
We need to continue to hammer like we've been doing. We were calling them every few months to, for updates to see where it was due to COVID and now it's every month, which is how we got them back down here, uh, for this meeting. You know, I apologized to them for being a nag, I said, too bad, you gotta get this done and down here. He said he understood, you know, that's our job to do it, but we're already doing it, we're pushing on, we have the meetings, um, Connie calls them all the time. We sent, we did a resolution, we sent a resolution up there. I solicited letters, as you know, from the yacht club and the people on the bay, sent the letters up there to them, telling them that this needs to be done, so we're keeping the pressure on them and it's, you know, it's having effect, that's how we got them down here again the second time.
Sure.
So we're in the process of doing it, so it's, um, everything's being done right now that can.
Years ago, we had an engineer, um, that kind of spearheaded this for us too, did all the surveying work and things like that. Are we, are we tackling this just on ourselves now or do we have represent, I, I saw on your, one thing here is retain special counsel.
Correct.
Okay, what does that mean?
That's to help us push them along and get everything we need, get the legality.
You say retain special counsel, you mean an attorney or you mean an engineering firm or what?
Well, okay, so I gotta say, so, so we have an environmental engineer, I'm sorry, environmental lawyer working with us now with some beach matters, um, also has the experience in handling anything, um, cause like you, I think we're all getting impatient and frustrated with the state, um, taking action on this, so maybe we get their attention by lawyering up, if you will, and, and take a more aggressive approach to get their attention. Now, that said, um, I sit on a couple New Jersey mayors, meetings of coastal communities all over New Jersey and the problem that we're talking about today, today is the same thing they're having as well, so it's not just a Cape May County, Wildwoods problem, it's statewide, so they're trying to figure out a way to address that. So between the federal money that you indicated and some state money, um, seems to be slow moving, but it seems to me that they're, from what I understand from the rest of the mayors, they're saying that we're, we're starting to make some headway to David's point, uh, so you sit tight, you maybe, you know, try to figure out what's gonna happen in the new year, but after that, you know, I'm, 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 I'm personally to the point where I'm kind of tired of talking about it, let's, let's get some action and let's get some results.
I'm with you and I'll do whatever I have to do to, to get that going, so, I mean, I think the, I think we gotta scream a little bit louder and, I mean, some of these other communities, mayors, is, uh, they're on their third phase of dredging. I mean, Ocean City is, you know, on their third time dredging and they have, they have an engineering company who goes after the state and gets these permits and gets a plan together and gets it done. Now, I don't know where they're getting their money from, probably from ratables and things like that. I don't know if the state's giving them money or what, but there are other communities that are getting it done, okay? I'm getting, I am getting frustrated at talking about it for the last eight years and, um, you know, if I, like, again, I said this before, if I was a homeowner along the bay and I couldn't pull my boat into my, into my slip, I know that's a personal thing that, but at least it's something that's gonna happen once the dredging gets done, um, you know, I, I'd be, I'd be here every single meeting screaming.
Yeah.
You know what I mean, so?
I, I have a fundamental, I'm, I don't profess to be a dredging expert, but I have, I guess, a kind of a fundamental question, just in my mind. So if we remove some of the, the sludge and all that from the bottom of the bay and so forth, does, does that naturally allow us to offer more water to fill that bay and perhaps reduce some of our flooding?
No.
Not necessarily, however, there is a move towards using dredging to help with, um, flood mitigation in terms of raising wetlands. That's actually one of the FEMA applications that's going on in North Wildwood, so it's beneficial reuse of the materials.
Very expensive, um, you know, it takes a long time, it's just basically taking the dr- dredge spoils and spraying it back onto the.
Which actually would be more cost effective than actually.
Trying to get rid of it.
Get out of the ground, putting it on land, letting it dry and have it carted off to some landfill in Cumberland County, so.
Yeah.
The trend is more, it's called thin, uh, spray application. The trend is towards looking at that, cause it's the most cost effective way to deal with your dredging and put it back where it came from, which is in the marshland. And there's also ecological benefits to that as well.
That's a new way they're looking at that because it was kind of against those that were, were fighting this and they're now taking another new look at it and we're starting to see headway into allowing it and approving it, so that's the catch.
Yeah, I think one of the other towns that.
The big thing was the spoils and we're, we're working on that.
And Ravillon tried it, you know?
And the other benefit to that as well on the flood mitigation side, because we had, did have those meetings and like I said, North Wildwood's gonna apply for that for FEMA, that helps attenuate wave action, so when you have, um, Back Bay, uh, increased tidal activity and you have that water lap and if there's more of a marshland, it attenuates how it smacks up against your shoreline, so.
As long as they've done a study to make sure that once you spray it on the, on the marshland, that the next big storm doesn't bring your way back in, you know what I mean? That's the other, the other thing. That's where it all came, most of it came from.
Yeah, that's exactly what North Wildwood's doing, one of their applications.
Yeah, so, okay, thank you.